Is now beginning and I guess I called your order and do we need to go into?
No, no, we'll just do work session first.
Okay, and then we'll do the special meeting for the meeting and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. So we'll do the pledge of allegiance at the meeting, not at this work session.
Okay, yeah. So the first part of the, the first.
And I'm going to turn it over to, to you.
Linda was maybe going to try and zoom in. She had a doctor's appointment this afternoon that kind of was unexpected and so she's going to maybe try if she, if she can't. But first part of this, we want to do budget update. Kent has presentation prepared, you have the budget book. We also want to include in that budget discussion, some information from Bill Young in his area, he's going to talk a little bit about how, you know, the, the budget development process works from his perspective. And then Heather and or Phil, I think maybe are talking some academic budget development. But I think it makes sense to let Kent get through the presentation and cover everything. And then we can have some discussion and ask some questions at the end, and that way we can use the time kind of efficiently and productively. Following the work session, then we'll call the special meeting to order and go right into executive session for consultation with legal counsel. And then Ray and Lisa Ehrlich will join us by Zoom for exec session. So, and then when you come out, if you have any action to take, you can do that and then adjourn the meeting. So I think the goal is still to be done. You know, six o'clock, if not sooner. Now try and use the time efficiently. I know you guys have things that you want to do and, and so we want to try to move it along. And I think we scheduled an hour, did we schedule an hour for the work session? We didn't put time to it. Okay, I guess we'll decide. Yeah, sixty minutes, but I don't think it'll take that long. So Kent, we'll turn it over to you. How about that?
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. And as Dr. Kroll mentioned, we would appreciate it if during the presentation, if you have questions or comments, you want to get into it. If you'd make a note and then come back to it after we've made the, the presentation, that would be really helpful for us. I would say though, that as I get into the numbers here, I'll be referring to specific numbers on specific pages and lines in your book. So if you're not following, or if I lose you, please let me know and so we can catch up and all be on the same page at the same time.
And I don't think your intent is to really go through the supplemental information in the back, correct?
That's correct. We just intend to focus on the operating budget at this time. If you have questions on the supplemental, you can get those questions to us and we certainly be want to to respond to those. Really, I'm going to try and do my presentation in about ten minutes. I just want to highlight the update and the recommendation for next year. I do want to allow about ten minutes for Bill and either Heather or Phil to talk about the budget development. What I would say, you know, we tried to, I think, develop what I would call a right-sized budget recommendation. So we hope, I hope that leaves plenty of time for conversation. We do hope there's robust conversation among all the board members about this recommendation. And also not only among the board members, but between the board and the administration. So hopefully there's plenty of time for that. Just a few comments. See. Actually, I think I'll save those comments until after Bill and I don't know Heather or Phil. Okay, so Bill, why don't you go ahead and then when Bill's done, you can hop in.
Okay. So I just wanted to chat a little bit about kind of how our process in IT works to get us to the budget number and the, the request that we ask. And so we start that process. I mean, we kind of run it year round, but we started in earnest in September, late August, early September with my directors bringing to me kind of those needs as we move forward. Throughout the year, though, we're evaluating computer needs, software needs. We've got Amy Kersher that is our vendor relations and contract manager. Amy is constantly negotiating with our vendors and our contract suppliers on pricing throughout the year and is able to recognize savings during those piece, during those times. And then we've got Matt Jansen, who's in charge of client services. Matt and his team work with academics to evaluate how many computers we need in the classroom so that we're not stacking a classroom with twenty-five computers if there's never going to be more than fifteen students in there, right? And so we try to right-size in that area too. We also do a lot of our benchmarking using Educause. Educause is kind of that, an international IT governing, I say governing body for, for higher education. Any institution that has a dot edu address is a member of Educause. And so we have access then to a lot of data with Educause to help us benchmark kind of where our spend is in comparison to other institutions with our student population, with our employees. And, and of course, with the amount of endpoints or technology that we use. And so it's called the Educause Core Data Service. It's a big analytics service that Educause provides. So we, we feed into that every year, our data, you know, what, what our budget is, how many endpoints, how many desktops and laptops, how many network devices, kind of all the data as it pertains to our operations and IT, along with how many employees we have in IT and what roles that they serve in. We've made some improvements. We, we've advanced our position in our Educause Core Data Survey. When Tom Rowan was a CIO, he worked really hard in, in building that data in the, with Educause. And when I took over as CIO eight years ago, we were benchmarked at about thirty-four percent from a staffing perspective as to, as to where other institutions, our size, with our student population and our number of endpoints. We, we were staffed at thirty-four percent of where we should be staffed. We're really excited today that we've reached thirty-eight percent. So we're a little bit closer to where we need to be. But with that, so each, each September, August, September, my team brings to me, you know, Matt, Matt will bring to me the need for more employees and client services. We're really fortunate that we get to leverage our student, our techies and student workers. But those, as much as we depend on them, those are not full-time employees. And so Matt brings me, you know, a request for a couple of more service technicians or, or help desk technicians, service desk analysts and desktop analysts. And then Roger, who, who takes care of our enterprise application side and which is our banner solution, our ERP, student information systems, kind of those big enterprise applications. He'll bring to me those requests for some additional employees there. And then Josh, who's our director for infrastructure, which is all of the network and server side, he brings those to me. And so through our process and our recognition that we don't have, as we all know, don't have a limitless budget, we cut all those requests out before it ever even comes to you guys. So we really will grow a little bit here and there or shift roles. But as far as real seeing any growth within our department, from an employee standpoint, it's, you know, again, we've moved from being staffed at thirty-four percent to thirty-eight percent. So part of that is because maybe we, we did add a network technician last year, but we also have done well at reducing our number of, our, our footprint. So that's what kind of closes that gap. I felt like that was important for you guys to know that we, we directly benchmark against other institutions our size. And, and this is an opportunity for me to brag a little bit about my team and the work that they do. We built a really, I've told you all before in these, in these meetings that in my twenty-five years in IT, I'm working with the most capable team I've ever worked with. And I've worked in with a lot of big organizations. And so they do a lot of work and to, to keep the technology running here. The challenge that we have is because we're staffed so slimly in IT, my average employee probably works sixty, fifty, sixty hours a week. And it's tough as, as a manager to, you know, to ask that of your employees. We do that. They're, they're, they come in and they get the job done. But, but again, when we benchmark against other institutions our size, we're right on with the number of students that we have and the number of employees we have, we're right on with our desktops, our, our endpoints. We're right on with our network connectivity, with our border-to-border wireless, with our server storage, kind of how we've got all of that set out, built out. It's just the employee side that we were short on, short on employees, but it's, you know, we make it work. We appreciate the resources. I've told you guys every time I bring something to y'all, how much I appreciate your approval and us being able to provide the technology that we do. But it's important that you also understand that we go through a pretty, a very robust process to make sure that we're not buying software that we don't need or overpaying for software at the time, that we're not buying too many extra computers. You always have to have something, you know. But you know, we don't, we don't have a bunch of just dead computers sitting in a classroom that aren't getting used. And so our team works hand in hand with academics, with Zach and academics and their new system to really figure out that, that classroom scheduling and, and, and technology needs so that we're, we're kind of getting it as, as close to a zero-sum game as we can when it comes to hardware and software. And, and I also, through this process, we look at what contracts we have coming up. We've brought to you guys recently some longer stretches, some longer span contracts. That's how we're able to achieve some of those savings. You know, when you're, when you're licensing software, if we go at it for one year, you know, each, each year that we add to that, go to three or five-year licensing agreement, we're able to trim quite a bit off of that licensing cost annually. So that's, those are some of the reasons why I brought those to you. But again, this, I just wanted to take a minute to kind of let you know that the process moving through for us to get to our final number as to what we need from, from the institution to run the department, that's, that's kind of how we get there. Just anecdotally, kind of give me a chance to talk and tell you how, tell you how it works for us, but it's a, it's, it's, it is an in-depth process for us and, and it's a lot of no's from my side to my staff whenever they need more. And they get it. They understand that, that this is what we need, this is what we have. We've got to figure out how to operate kind of at that in-between level there. So I appreciate you guys, appreciate the work that our admin, the VPs work through this tirelessly all year round to try to get us to where we're at and be able to keep things, keep things moving forward. So that's where we're at in IT.
All right, Phil and I are going to share a little bit on the academic side. We have shared information with you already about AdAstra, which Bill referenced. The more we use it, the smarter it gets. So we're in our first year of putting information into that system. And so actually Phil and I just met with Zach this morning and went through a list of all of the cancellations that we had from this spring semester to prepare for scheduling for the next spring. So AdAstra is really helping us monitor things like fill rate, the number of sections that we're offering so that we're making sure we have enough in the schedule to meet the needs of our students, but that we're not offering so many options that it spreads the enrollment out to a point that we end up having to cancel sections. So so that's a thank you to you all for approving the purchase of that software because we're able to use that and we're using it significantly right now. Again, being in the first year, it's not giving us the prescriptive information quite yet in terms of, hey, schedule this here. It's going to get smarter the more we use it. So we're going to start seeing that here in the next, you know, few months of some of those recommendations. But it is helping with the technology, it's helping with how we schedule courses and is helping us, you know, maintain a schedule that meets student needs, but also is aware of the budget constraints as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Phil to talk about some other things.
One of the things that we work through on an ongoing basis that we have done this year is staff analysis in terms of academics. The deans work through all of the position descriptions and consider how work can be consolidated in terms of staff members. Really strong example, I think, that occurred going into this fiscal year was there was administrative assistant in my division and there was an additional administrative assistant in humanities, social sciences. And that position was consolidated. So basically that position as an example is really meeting three functions. It would be very possible that that could be three positions. So the person in charge of AdAstra is the same person who is overseeing the FLAC process for compensation. Also, that person is my administrative assistant. So one division came, gave up a administrative assistant so that there could be consolidation of three functions. And from basically potentially really four functions became one, one person. So that's a good example of how we continue to look at potential consolidation of efforts. And like I say, the deans have just worked through all that to look at next year if we can do more, well, efficiency in terms of staffing. Another thing that we want to point out to you that pertains to what Heather was talking about. This year, all the faculty work through the redesign of all AA and AS degree programs. And so we have found potentially a lot of efficiencies in terms of directing students towards potentially fewer breadth of choices and directing them more towards high enrollment offerings in terms of particularly their gen F, gen ed choices. So, you know, where in the former design of the pathways, there might have been like eight course offerings that students were invited to pick from. Now there were potentially like four choices. So that will help with efficiencies in terms of course fill and will bolster enrollments. As an example, we were offering essentially in history, we were offering six courses. And that got reduced in terms of world civilization. That got reduced to, in the coming year, two courses. So we could see that those kind of course offerings could result in many sections potentially having not peak enrollment or potentially canceled. And now it will fortify those kind of offerings. So it's much more strategic planning and should yield better enrollments.
Thanks, Phil, Heather, Bill. Kim, I'm going to go ahead and jump into some of the presentation here. Just before I do though, I would like to say that a couple of things. Mention that we're hoping to have a good discussion following my presentation of the numbers. Also, from my point of view, this, this is, should be a beginning of discussion. There, there's going to be more opportunities. There won't actually need to be any decision made on the recommendation until probably July, possibly August. But there, there will be time for further discussion. So we'll see how it goes today and, and how much needs to be carried over. Another thing I would say, you know, as we put this budget together, what I, I called earlier maybe trying to right-size the budget from our perspective in the administration. But we looked at, you know, one of the common interests that we think the administration would have and the board, and I picked out two I want to highlight. I think, I think both the administration and the board are looking for a sustainable operating budget that maintains the quality and the identity of the, the college. And I think secondly, there should be a reasonable expectation of support from the local taxpayers. You know, while I think those are common interests, they can also be competing interests at some time. And I'm sure that there'll be discussion and debate on which of those interests should be emphasized most and what that really means. So hopping into the numbers, in, in your book, the first part of the book up to the, the tab is what we refer to as the operating budget. And we start at the end of that section. So if you want to follow along, this would be on the page that has OB nine at the bottom, operating budget nine. And this is something that we showed you at the April work session. This is the changes that we've made to the current year budget since we gave you the update in November. And what I want to highlight here is there's about eight positions that we're removing from the budget or savings to the budget of three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. We're also reducing the part-time overload. And there's a reduction to the amount of budget that was allocated for raises for the current year. So overall, to the current year budget, it's being reduced on the expenditure side by nine hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So again, that's on line fourteen of page OB nine. Moving up to the next page, this is just the changes that we've made to the revenue side of the current year budget since the November update. There's a small adjustment to tuition and fee revenue on line ten, about thirty-seven thousand improvement. A little bit to taxes and process coming in a little more than we had anticipated, about eight thousand dollars. And then we've increased other income, amount of other income by two hundred and fifty-three thousand. Most of that interest income, you know, we went through such a long period of time where we weren't getting any interest. And now it's building up and, and our estimates are catching up with reality here. So that's a positive of about almost three hundred thousand dollars to the revenue side of the current year budget since we updated you in November. Then sliding forward to page numbered OB seven, this is a summary of the current year operating budget. And you could see that we still anticipate a deficit budget for the year and it's on line seven. But that's been improved from a deficit of a little over two point one million to a deficit estimated to be about one point two million for the current year. We're still above the ten point five target on line twelve by about three million dollars.
Just for Aaron's sake, again, will you remind Aaron what the ten point five percent of expenditures is? Just sort of into this process.
That's a agreement we've had for a long time to, to board and the administration have had task agreement on that we want to keep the unencumbered cash in the operating budget. It's the budgets that we're talking about here at a point where the encumbered cash is at least ten point five percent of the expenditures. So if the expenditures here are fifty-eight, almost fifty-eight million, then ten point five percent of that would be would be this six point, six million dollars roughly on line twelve. We're anticipating coming in at about nine million dollars. So it's about three million dollars over the target at this point in time.
And that ten point five percent right now, Shelley and Kent would say is about, is, is just about three months of payroll, right? Payroll and insurance is all that is. That covers about three months of payroll and insurance.
All right. So, no, that's a good point. Moving on up to next page in OB six. This is where we start moving into our, the administrative recommendation for next year. And we've gone through here, you'll see there is an increase of a little over a million dollars for recommended three point, three percent salary increase. There's a salary, a half percent for salary, salary equity adjustment of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And an increase of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for employee health insurance. One full-time physician we're recommending for an athletic trainer, this is a safety and compliance issue. Then there are you know, three, four things here, smaller amounts that are really more inflation-related adjustments. There's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar recommended increase for property insurance premiums. This is just an unavoidable item for us at this point. We do have some recommended reductions of employee positions. And we've just put this in as a lump sum on line twelve of four hundred thousand dollars. We've identified positions in the, in the VP discussions. Quite a few of these will be through attrition. There could be some though, where we're looking at positions where there is an employee, current employee involved. So we're not going to really talk about the specifics of that recommendation at, at this time. The, the other item there said estimating operating budget expense to be covered by new state funding of a million dollars. That's on line thirteen. So I think the easiest way to talk about this is to jump you over to this is like just the second page in the operating budget section. And it's in the, the notes to, to the recommendation. What's going on here is the state, and we believe these numbers will come to pass. I'm not sure the governors actually signed everything, but we're fairly confident in these numbers. There's some some funding coming to the college from the state that we're not putting directly into the operating budget. And the main reason for that is that the state wants, is going to want to see how we spend these funds. And some of them specifically we received, like burden maintenance, this hundred thousand dollars, we've received to Heather Morgan, the, the KCT rep, specific instructions to put that in a separate fund. Let me walk down through these one by one, the apprenticeship funds. And we received these last year. We're anticipating almost one point four million dollars. These are funds that come to the college. From, from my perspective, they don't have a great benefit to the financial, to the finances of the college. I think the benefit more is in that it, it can be a benefit to our mission of helping students and businesses for the most part, from my perspective. And some other people may be able to shed greater light on this, but it's, it's more of a pass-through where we're helping businesses and students in workplace and apprenticeship type opportunities. Yeah, we're going to put it in a designated fund. It's definitely a designated.
earmarked for specific purposes. So we can't just use it for anything. It's meant for upskill, re-skill, apprenticeship type internships.
Yes, yeah. So the Student Success Fund, and this is a new fund we've never received. Or this, you know, we never received, it's, the legislature has never authorized this revenue to the college. We're anticipating almost one point seven million dollars. Again, we're going to put this in a designated fund so we can account for it. There may be, well, we're pretty sure there are some opportunities to use this for funds or for items that either are in the existing operating budget or would have been put in the existing budget. For example, there's For example, there's a, um, the modomatic, which we think is, is very um, useful for student success and identifying students who, who can uh, succeed through contacts from uh, enrollment management and so forth. Uh, we would have had to put that in as a budget addition. But in the current way we're planning to do this is uh, that will be an expenditure out of the designated fund now. And there's possibly some other uses for that. And then there'll be things that we may not have done at all. Uh, but would um, satisfy the, the intent of the student success money that uh, those expenditures would come out of the designated fund. Capital outlay funds. This is uh, money that we anticipate is going to be ongoing. Uh, we're showing it at one point six six nine million for next year. We received about that much last year. And again, this is an opportunity, we're putting it in a designated fund, but there may be some um, capital outlay type expenditures for equipment, computer replacement, where it makes sense to take it out of this designated fund. And it can help our operating fund in the short term as well as there'll be funds that will be maybe carried over or that will be used for that uh, list of deferred maintenance items, which we've shared with you in the past. Um, that these funds will be used for. Um, the deferred maintenance, the hundred thousand dollars, this is a very specific uh, item that the legislature added. And it's our understanding that'll be four or five years of this. And it's pretty much what it says. It needs to be set aside for use in deferred maintenance. But very clearly, uh, we've been told that there'll be specific uh, reporting. Heather Morgan has told us, we need to be prepared for specific reporting on this item. Cybersecurity funds, we've received that last year. We're going to receive it again. Hopefully it will continue. And again, this is uh, we'll, we'll take these expenditures out of the designated fund. But um, if we didn't have this money, it probably would have, well, it definitely would have needed to come from the operating fund. So it's a way we can help the operating fund with some of these new state funds from the current year. So I'd like to go back then. I think I was on OB six, and that, that really is all I wanted to say about OB six. So going up to OB five. This is a summary of the revenues that we're expecting for next year compared to the revenues that we expect to receive this year. So the first column of numbers there, that's the current year um, estimated revenues, what we expect to receive this year. And then the far right column is the revenues that we expect to receive next year. Uh, including the um, the assumptions that we've made in the budget. And there's an assumption in there for um, a mill levy increase. And I'll get to that as I go down through this. Um, so the first section there, down to line ten is the uh, student tuition and fees are what we call student sources revenue. And we're anticipating in our budgeting process, the same number of credit hours for next year. As you recall, the only change we made to the rates for student uh, tuition and fees was a one dollar decrease for the in-county residents. And that accounts for an estimated twenty-seven thousand dollar reduction. So that's the only uh, change we're anticipating for next year from students. From the state or the operating budget, our revenues are actually going to decrease. Um, this is probably a result of our enrollment decreases over previous years. The state uses a three-year rolling average. Um, and it is a complicated formula, but it does have an enrollment um, factor in the form, formula. So maybe um, our state aid for, this is what we call a tiered and non-tiered revenue, will decrease by six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We do anticipate a, uh, an increase in the XL and CTE money. Sometimes we would refer to that as SP uh, so one eighty-five, three eighty-five.
Okay.
One fifty-five.
Where are you again?
Well, line twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on line eleven and twelve. Thank you for slowing me down there. So overall, we're expecting a, a decrease in the state revenues to the operating budget. So I mentioned, there's going to be an influx of money going over to the designated accounts. Um, and if you read ahead, uh, you'll know that we are currently recommending a one mil increase um, for the operating budget for next year. And that would increase our operating revenues by one point nine million dollars roughly. So when you take all that into account and you come over to the uh, I guess it could be OB four, this is operating funds budget summary for FY twenty twenty-five. You see, those changes that I've highlighted for both last year and then this year. Um, we come down to line seven, revenues over under expenditures with the deficit of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, we don't like to budget a deficit, obviously, but um, we think that's a reasonable amount of deficit that it still gives us time to. And going along with, as I mentioned, and as you can see here, the down on line thirteen, twelve and thirteen. The uh, target goal, we're still in excess of the target goal. So we think it's reasonable. Um, it would need to be turned around. Um, it's better than the, the uh, deficit that we're anticipating for this year, which again, may or may not come to pass. We'll see what, what happens when we get the year-end closing. Sometimes our deficit is not as much as year-end as we anticipate. We tend to be a little conservative in our estimates sometimes. So that's where we are in being close to the end here. And I'm going to skip back to page OB one here and just highlight our administrative rationale for the, the mill levy uh, recommendation that we made. Um, we showed you a preliminary, preliminary uh, recommendation last month with a two mil increase. Uh, you as a board ask us to bring back options, which would show what would happen uh, if there was no change to the mill levy as one option. Or if there was a mill levy reduction that kept the amount of taxes the same as last year. That's basically what we would say uh, would keep the revenue neutral rate. So those were the two options that we understood that you asked us to bring back and analyze. Uh, plus we uh, felt that the two mil was not going to be appropriate. Uh, so we've reduced our recommendation to a one mil increase. And if you kind of looked down at the little box there. Uh, as I said, the one mil increase or that recommendation on OB four that we just looked at would give us a deficit of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So this little box compares that deficit, which is from the one mil increase that we're recommenda- recommending to the two options that you as a board ask us to consider. So if we have no mill increase or decrease, this was why I've listed as A here. This would use the valuation increase, but it would keep the mill levy the same. It would increase the operating deficit estimate that we have of four hundred and eighty mil, thousand dollars to one million five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Under all these assumptions, if we then would reduce the mill levy to a point where we were basically at the R and R, that would reduce the taxes levied for next year down to the level that we're levying this year. That would reduce, and that would increase the operating deficit based on the expenditure assumptions that we've made, not changing the expenditure assumptions. But it would increase the operating deficit to two point four million roughly. So just real quickly, and I'm on this through here. Uh, for the administrative rationale, we've looked at several items. You know, if you look at the amount that we reduce the current year operating budget, which then carries forward to the, to the next year budget. And this was um, back on um, page OB nine, line four, nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And then the um, four hundred thousand in um, position reductions that we're recommending for next year of four hundred thousand dollars. We've reduced the budget by one point three million dollars um, from what we were showing previously. And we made, what we think are increases to next year's expenditure budget. Which includes the three percent raise, the health insurance contribution, the equity adjustment of half percent. The one, one position for athletic trainer. The property tech, property insurance premium, which is really unavoidable, and a few smaller items. We've looked at the history of the mill levy, and it's been reduced in the past four years from twenty mils to twelve mils. So really what we're asking is to add one mil back. And if you look at that um, down below, this is the numbers on item six here. If we had left the mill levy the same for the past four years, we would have received over three point eight million more in tax dollars during that time. And the base tax uh, going into the, the twenty-five years would have been one point seven million higher than it's going to be. So we think it's reasonable to ask for a billion dollars to come back from that. And just the very last point, while we understand it's not the greatest thing to ask um, the taxpayers to, to contribute more to the college. We looked at what the one mil increase would be for a homeowner whose property is valued at the median level of the county. And that one mil would cost that taxpayer fourteen dollars a year. So Dr. Crowe, I, I'm finished. I'd turn back to you if you want to tie a bow on this before we um, send it back to the trustees for discussion.
No, I think it's um, I think it's important to look at all of this kind of holistically and um, comprehensively, uh, we've said, said for the last couple of years that continuing to reduce the tax request and the mill levy is going to work us into a spot that's not sustainable. Um, I realize that, uh, you know, we're looking at enrollment decreases and things like that. But Butler isn't the only one that's seen enrollment decreases. Every institution, every community college in Kansas in the last ten years, except one has seen enrollment decreases. And there are three institutions that have had more than we have had. Couple of them almost fifty percent uh, enrollment loss. Um, I think there's eleven of us that have lost somewhere between uh, twenty and uh, almost fifty percent enrollment. So and we understand the enrollment piece, but um, uh, you know, um, part of the discussion that we certainly have at the VP level is what do we do? How do we reduce? How do we um, address these issues with the least impact on our students? That's why we're here. We're here to serve students. You heard from Phil and Heather, the work that they're doing with courses and pathways and degree pathways and class scheduling. You've heard from Bill, how his team works really, really hard to try and figure out how to manage those continuing increases in technology um, and operational functions, kinds of things that always go up every single year, and yet do it with the level of staffing that they have. Most of our budget, the biggest part of our budget is personnel. And just because you have an enrollment decrease doesn't mean it's a one for one. You know, one percent enrollment decrease, one percent personnel decrease, or five percent personnel decrease. Because just because you lose some enrollment out of classes doesn't mean automatically that those classes go away. Um, and so I, I guess we would appreciate some um, thoughtful conversation about the recommendations um, uh, that we're putting forth. We feel like the, the VPs have sat in our meetings and talked about where we cut. How do we cut? How do we reduce this? It's not, and you can see there's one position that we've left on the budget recommendation for next year, one position. And we started out with multiple positions. But we've gone through that budget and we've said, what do we absolutely have to have moving forward? Well, you can't do anything about property insurance increases and health insurance increases. We have to continue to compensate our employees. If we don't compensate them, uh, Bill Young uses the, the uh, you know, the comment that you can't expect your employees to continue to work for you when each year they're making less than what they did the year before. Now, health insurance is a big part of that compensation package, and you folks have been really, really good about supporting that. Um, but we have to have a salary increase in there for our folks. Um, and so what, what's being presented to you as far as an expenditure budget, additions to the budget for next year literally is trimmed to the bare bones. These are the things that we absolutely feel like uh, we have to have. Um, and again, you know, we think we have some flexibility, maybe with some of the state funds that come in to offset a few things. But we have to wait until we have those numbers for sure, final numbers for sure. And we might be able to, for instance, pay for the modomatic contract, which would have come out of operating budget. Uh, you know, uh, moving forward, we can probably pay for that with the student success dollars. But those aren't necessarily sustainable dollars. They may be one-time or two-time dollars. And so those are the kinds of things that we think about as well when we're looking at these budget considerations. Uh, the things that you see on page OB six that are additions to the budget, those are things that are going to be ongoing. That'll, that'll be in the budget as we move forward uh, year after year. Um, so you know, I guess, I guess I would appreciate some conversation about that. Uh, I want you to know that the VPs have worked really, really hard to look at this, to dig uh, to try and put together recommendations. And we do have some, uh, you know, that we can potentially move forward with uh, if we have to. Um, but we've approached this the way that we did when we were coming out of COVID. We knew we were potentially having budget cuts. And so what's our multi-tier plan here? What, what do we have to eliminate that has the least impact on students to start off with? And the further you get down that, those tiers, the greater impact there is on students. So.
Jim, I just want to mention one thing, uh, and apologize for this, but if there are questions that I need to answer, I'm going to need to leave at a quarter till six for a family obligation. So I just wanted to let you know that.
I think Kent's also open to supplemental. If you've got supplemental questions or any of that information, get ahold of him and he'll go through that with you too.
So Kent on OB one.
Yes.
Number two. A.
OB one.
Yes.
So you have down salary increase three percent. Are you talking hourly wa- hourly workers to everything?
That, that would be a, yes, our op, what we call operating staff, which are mostly um, time card people, our um, mill managers and our administration and our faculty. This is a, a more or less a placeholder for all those positions, plus adjuncts.
Adjustment for staff, one half percent.
I'll, I'll let Shelley answer that.
Okay, so um, about, it's two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we did a compensation study and found that we were pretty low, below market on a lot of things. So. and found that we were pretty low, below market on a lot of things. So at that time, we went to the board and asked if we could get half a percent of payroll to use towards getting our wages up to where they need to be and continuing that need in future years. So we put away that half percent to allow us to adjust for market and or equity, meaning positioning within that pay grade. So for example, the first year we did, we moved our hourly, if you will. Most of the money has been spent in the hourly paid group. So the hourly paid group, we did a lot of combination of things. We moved part-time people to get paid the same as full-time people, doing the exact same job. There was a dollar and a half difference between what a part-time person got paid and what a full-time person got paid. We moved that, we made those rate changes. That costs money. We spent that equity and market adjustment money. Then we went from a ten dollar base to an eleven dollar base start salary for new people coming in. Last year, year and a half ago, we went from eleven dollars to thirteen dollars as our base starting rate. In the next year, we'll wanna move that another milestone to fourteen. So we use that money as we get it, some I kinda store up because those are big movements in the budget. So last year I didn't spend all that money, so what I had is gonna carry over. I'll add to it from this year, and I'll be able to make that adjustment for that group. So there's a planned elevation.
Sure, and I think that's great. So help me out. A couple of years ago, we were doing the budget and we were doing salaries.
Mm-hmm.
And we set aside money for, and I'm gonna say this wrong, but for gifts or for attrition, whenever somebody did something well, we would give them extra money. Help me out with that. What was that called? That was?
No, we never did that.
Oh, oh, was it stimulus dollars that we did that?
Yeah, we had, we, we were able to use some of those federal stimulus dollars that year to give a stipend
Stipends, okay.
To both full-time and part-time employees that were still employed at that time, but it was a one-time.
Yeah.
And it didn't go on their base salary or anything like that. No, no.
Eight hundred thousand dollar.
Yes.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. But it didn't get added to their base salary. It was a one-time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Was that through, kinda through her funds or?
Yes. Yeah, we had the ability to, to do that.
Kent, on the, the state aid monies, are those you talked about in the context of the deferred maintenance that there was, you expected there was gonna be some reporting, I guess, to make sure the money's being used. Are, are any of those funds savable? To be able to do more in a future year, or is it, use it this year, or you're not gonna get it next year?
No, we, we believe we can save those monies.
We, um, I think, well, I think they have to be spent within the five-year timeframe. One of the questions that was asked was by one of the other community college presidents was you know, we're gonna get five hundred thousand dollars over a period of five years. If we have a five hundred thousand dollar project, can the college fund that upfront and pay for it? And then as the, these dollars come in on an annual basis, pay ourselves back. So I, I think that that's the case, but I think that we'll have to report that it's been spent within that five years. We have to, we actually have to put together a five-year plan for how those dollars are gonna be used.
I just wondered if a portion of capital outlay could be set aside for West.
I don't think so.
Because it doesn't, because storms don't qualify, or because the money's gonna have to be spent before.
I think what would happen would be that we would have to set aside some of our other deferred maintenance dollars that we already have and use these funds to pay.
Okay.
You know, for that.
And at that meeting, Heather Morgan on that hundred thousand dollars kinda looked at everybody and said, if you have roofs to replace, replace the roofs, you know?
Yeah, we're in good shape with roofs.
Yeah.
So.
For now.
Yeah.
No, they were all replaced in twenty seventeen, so it's.
Bumping up on eight years.
So is it, one, one other question, sorry, I don't wanna plug the mic here. From what I'm, I'm gathering from here, it's, it's administrative, it's administration's position that you've done as much as you can to reduce the expense side of the budget. So really, all we're deciding on the mill question is how much of a deficit we're gonna incur. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I suppose you can always reduce it more. It's how, it's what, at what expense to quality and the identity of the institution?
But you don't, don't have any other, there, there's nothing that's in the background that's targeted for, well, if we had to, we could reduce this. Those are discussions that you haven't had and presumably hope, hope to not have unless.
I think we, I think we strained ourselves to get to this point.
Okay. Find the four hundred thousand dollars in, you know, for attrition and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So Kent, could, is there any way we could um use that percent and do so much percent for hourly workers and then so much percent for faculty?
You could structure raises um po- potentially in different ways, yes. So that's, that's sort of a hypothetical or theoretical, and the answer to that is theoretically, yes.
Thank you.
But the faculty side would have to be negoti- I mean, the faculty raises would have to be negotiated.
Yeah.
And for Aaron's application, historically, whatever, whatever's been negotiated has been what everybody else has gotten. So if we negotiate a, you know, a five percent raise with the faculty, then everybody else gets a five percent raise as well.
Mary suggests possibly, can we do that differently if we choose to? I think the, the sal- the hourly wage people make much less than the salary. So it's, I had a thought, you know, we could do, we couldn't afford it this year, we could give everybody X dollar amount straight up dollar amount, that it would be more beneficial for the lower paid people to that everybody would be equally treated. It would just not cost a million dollars necessarily. I do appreciate you sending this out to us ahead of time so we could look at it and how, present it. I think it's a really good starter. My, my comment I have is like, the state takes a three-year average of our enrollment decline and like, hey, you guys don't need more taxpayer money because you've lost students, whereas we're telling the local people, they were losing students, but we want more money from you. It's the state's not even, that state's not even giving us more than we're asking. So we're asking the local people to, to do that.
I think they're only doing that to one institution, and that's in poor estate, and they're giving them nine million a gift.
Yeah.
But if you take, if you take even the one million, if we leave the mill levy the same, or what you're asking for a mil, it's sixty-five thousand people, that's almost seventeen dollars per man, woman, and child in the county. I think stating it such a way, it's only gonna be fourteen dollars for an entire household is a little it's a unique way to present, but I'll probably, I wouldn't.
Well, it's based on, it's based on the median property. I mean, that's the, you know, this stuff all comes from.
No, I know, but it's also seventeen dollars per person. Which.
For property owners.
For property.
No, seventeen dollars per man, woman, and child. Sixty-five thousand people into a million dollars is sixteen bucks.
But I guess my point is those that don't own property don't pay anything. If you're renting a home in Butler County.
You still pay.
I know, but your rent's gonna go up.
Rent goes up.
It's gonna have to at some point.
Well, the other, another.
Trying not to, but it's getting.
Yeah.
Very difficult.
Well, another data point no one wants to consider either is, I was talking to a friend of mine the other day just about property taxes. His house in Cedric County is appraised at three hundred and eighty-five thousand. And his taxes are less than mine, that's appraised at two hundred and fifty thousand. So my house is valued at over a hundred thousand dollars less, and my taxes are higher than his. And that's, it's a problem countywide. I'm in the process of trying to do a a rural development, we're trying to get through the planning commission. And the county's getting ready to change their entire development regs because the townships are pushing back on growth because they can't. It's the chicken and egg argument non-stop, which is, well, we can't afford it, but we need tax dollars. But we can't grow because we taxed too much. Something's gotta give. So I, I just think if you're a taxing entity, you have to be really cognizant of that, especially if you're one that's shrinking. And Shelby's point, if the state says, we're gonna take six hundred grand from you, and then we're gonna triple that six hundred and say, okay, taxpayer, you're gonna pay it now in this one county. It just.
Well, it's eighteen counties where they're doing it.
But this county is asking for three times what the state is taking away. If the state's taking away six hundred thousand, and then we're increasing by one point nine.
Well, but you, what you need to do is look at all the other mill levies from the community colleges and look at what they're asking for from their taxpayers. Because all the mill levies are different and all the, the valuations are different, so.
All due respect, we have the biggest county, so I would hope our mills would be less.
Well, they are, yes, of course.
And, and that's, I just, not to sound crass, but I'm concerned about what's going on here in the local county, and I don't think it's fair to put more money on the taxpayer here just by saying, well, all the county, all the community colleges are doing it. Okay, then the community college structure as it is, may need to change somehow. We've been doing the same thing for forty years, but society is changing and we have to respond to that.
That's right, and that's a legislative issue. You need to talk to your legislators to get it changed.
As well, it's not just legislative.
Yeah, and the local, local folks can weigh in, but that's a legislative issue that has to change because they changed it legislatively. I, I would say to you, and I can, I'll send you the, I'll send you the document that I continue to keep. I'll show you a table of the, the um mill levy changes for the major taxing entities in Butler County, the school districts, the cities, the county, and the college. There's a single taxing entity in this county that has lowered their tax request at the level that this college has. We have responded to the taxpayers and we've tried to pay attention. Everybody else has raised theirs. I'll, I'll send that document to you so you can look at it, and you can see where, who's asking for more money and where it's.
The population and.
Touted it all last year, and you guys sent out a flyer to everybody, like, hey, we've listened and we've actually cut your taxes. And this is the thing I've been trying to propose to the board, not micromanage, but like we, like we said last month or whenever it was, a couple of weeks ago, we're not gonna take the full increase, and then the bo- the administration has stepped up and said, hey, you're supporting cuts. But I think if we just said, we're not gonna raise taxes, I know Mary and Linda are willing to keep the mill the same, possibly, even if that happened. With, with our average class size, there's gonna be some consolidation done there. If we have classes that only two or three people teach, that maybe not, I know it's oversimplification, I get it.
No, it's not the average, though. Two, three is not the average.
I did, I know the average is thirteen point three.
But you're focused on
No, I'm trying.
One or two classes that have that, which are actually two or three, four, four classes combined that make one class for an instructor. So to speak to an isolated popu- population of courses when you haven't fully understood how they're paid is suggesting that we are felt fully funding an instructor for two students, which is not true.
I appreciate that. Uh, twenty-five percent of our classes have fewer than seven students. Twenty-five percent full, twenty-five percent. All I'm saying is if we just allot, this is the budget we're allowing, the administration will be able to figure out how to make some changes. We've had a decline of over ten years of over thirty percent of our students are credit hours. At some point, we have to put the brakes on and say, we've gotta be a little lighter weight and be more flexible with what's heading our way. We doubled our marketing budget tiers in a row. I haven't seen that increase our enrollment, we're gonna take the decline of the two or three percent. And the iPads data, we've gone up in employees, full-time equivalent employees over the last three years while losing, and in the five-year.
It, well, let me jump in with the iPad stuff. The iPad's data on employees is calculated differently. They use a different formula to calculate than if we actually did headcount. If we actually did headcount, we can show you over a period of time that our total employee population has decreased. It hasn't increased. But iPads calculates their stuff in a different way. Well, we're, I'm talking people. I'm talking people, actual bodies in the offices on campus.
I would like to see that, a couple of years, the uh total budgetary, you know, employees, administration or total employee cost, because it was seventy-three-ish a few years ago, and I've been reading that for a couple of years. Actually, our total employee cost of our budget used to be like seventy-three-ish percent. And I don't, we haven't asked for a couple of years, so.
It's in that range.
I would like it possible to know if it's seventy-five now or seventy-six, or still seventy-three. I don't even know that. I'm just, I'm just curious.
Okay. For the most part, like, school districts run, it, I mean, in many cases, you're buying something one time that lasts fifty years. So your greatest asset is your people. Whether it's your students or your, your, your faculty, your staff members, everybody, it's your people. Well, schools, education things, they do not, they're, they run with business principles, but they're not a business in that they can't write off furniture and moving and, and creating new office spaces and things like that. It's their employees, that, I mean, they just, their employees are the biggest part of their budget. And, and it's just, uh, you know, we don't go around building a, uh, I have a different viewpoint that sometimes I think we, you know, I would like to think that if we built a new dorm, we could attract new students. Or if we added wrestling, we could attack, track for twenty-four more students, or if we added this, you know, not subtraction by subtraction, but subtraction by addition. That we could add different, different things that maybe we need to, uh, you know, i- it's a, it's a delicate balance of how much can you cut and not be sustainable versus sustainable?
I think there's opportunities through visioning that you guys are gonna do to look at some of those future opportunities for you know, if, if you add new programming or you do some things differently. I think that those are gonna be great opportunities to, you know, to look at some of those things.
And Shelby, to your comment, I just wanna make sure that we, that this is again said, the investment in marketing is having an impact on applications to the institution. So if you look at the different areas, you see those, that pool growing. The challenge that we're having is converting that into an enrollment, and that's where the work needs to get done and get finessed so that we can get more um benefit from that effort. So um the uh the impact on enrollment is not directly marketing, it's part of that process, but good, it's good to know that, that we are having some success and uh uh Kelly does a great job in tracking all of that, and we're monitoring that. I mean, our conversion rates, we convert um students who've been in the, in the uh pipeline for a year over a year, and we're converting them. And so once we kind of start figuring that out a little bit better, we can be more successful. So I, I think the investment is a good one.
Could I ask?
Sure, go ahead.
Bill, or I'm sorry, Kent, I worry, yes, to leave. Um, Kent on uh OB four uh, line twelve and line ten. Um, you pointed out that ten and a half percent of expenditures is six point one million, but we actually have eight point eight in unencumbered cash.
That's.
The, or the projected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
So that, the difference of two point seven million, i- is that something that we could discuss that can possibly be used to offset some of the increases in the potential expenditures? Is, and, and I guess maybe it's more of a question for the board, do we feel comfortable running it down to ten point five with what we see with inflation? Um, are we, are we wanting to maybe have a little extra to prepare for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six?
Right.
Please.
You're focusing on this. Perfectly, yeah, that's a, a very good question. From my perspective, the question is, are you just kicking the can down the road? Because if you don't have a plan, if you, if you use the unencumbered cash to offset ongoing operating expenditures for two or three years, then what's the plan to bring it back up? So it's a, it's a reasonable conversation to have. You, you just need to consider that perspective also.
What, what would you consider uh reasonable use of the unencumbered cash? Uh, and instead of just like kicking the can down the road, is, would there be an example of?
Well, I g- I guess, just de facto, we've said, we're, we think the four hundred and eighty thousand deficit that we're projecting for next year is a reasonable amount for it to go down in one year because it gives us time then to try to level it out. Um, I used to do a two-year or three-year projection that would show what would happen if it just keeps going down, and at some point it has to come back up. It's kinda like, I lost, I don't know. Um, I guess it's partly the point I was trying to make when I talked about the mill levy being reduced by twenty mils, and we're asking for one mil back. If it keeps going down, then at some point, maybe we're gonna need to ask for more than one bill to come back. You don't know. I mean, can we unless we cut deeper and then you're getting into cuts that the administration considers to be harmful to the overall quality and, and identity of the institution. So those are the kind of things that everybody here's gonna have to weigh at some point.
And then um.
And then, um, on on the rationale on OB one, uh, the median home price was at a hundred.
Hundred and twenty-one.
Hundred and twenty-one thousand. Is that, is that, is that data current? Is that?
That, that's off the Butler County website. You think that that's twenty twenty-two, that might be their twenty twenty-two. It's on the Butler County website.
Now, I would say that my guess is that the median is below the mean.
Right.
Yep.
Right. Great. And I think last time we talked about if you could like prevent this, like you were explaining it to a five-year-old, that would help me a lot. And you did a great job. If we would have had crayons, it would have been.
Yeah, you, you've probably advanced more than you thought since you joined the.
I think that, yeah, I've learned an awful lot. I can tell you that. Um, I had a couple of other questions. It's okay. I don't mean to.
Not good.
Okay, um, Bill, on staff to thirty-eight percent compared to other schools. What, what's the average for the other schools? Are we below that average? Are we in the middle somewhere? I would assume all schools are understaffed.
Yeah, so, I mean, so it's, it's kind of like, you know, you, you have certain number of acres per cow you need to have, right? So we are definitely, all schools are definitely understaffed. Um, we are, we're half of what our peer schools are. So, so I would say thirty-eight percent, the other schools are priced staffed at seventy-five to eighty-five percent. We look at a larger, um, so from a community college in Kansas perspective, right? So Johnson County is twice our size. I mean, they're, they're huge. Uh, they've got a hundred and thirty IT staff. I've got thirty-one. Um, so they're four times the number of staff that we have. Went, while they're twice the size of us. And then from a, from a, from a technology per square foot or kind of a technology, um, saturation standpoint, we're, we're right in line with even Johnson County. So the amount of technology that we provide for our students is, is really unparalleled. In the community college level, we've got a couple of technical schools that are, have specific areas that have more, you know, technology, but we, we provide a lot of technology and infrastructure for our students and are supporting it about with half of this employees that we should.
Thank you. And then wait, I had a question for the two of you and I can't read my notes. I can't think about it. I don't have no idea. If you want to come over here and read my strategy.
Maybe if you've got questions, you know, just send them to me and we'll.
Yeah. Oh, I think that, um, when you were, were discussing uh, that you're using a lot of analysis to evaluate the efficiencies of, of the scheduling. Um, a- and are you? Are you, are you forecasting enrollment futures or taking the, the forecast of enrollment into account with that as well?
Sure. Yeah, so the, again, AdAstra is new for us, so I think the more we use it, the more we're going to be able to integrate. But we work very closely with ESOM's office in terms of enrollment numbers. We have a data team within academics that we're looking. We get enrollment sent to us every morning. We get course fill rates sent to us every single morning. So that's something we can go in and look at. Um, and we're having conversations. The data team meets monthly, but we're having conversations even more frequently than that to look at. You know, based on where enrollment is, where we were this last term, right? So if I'm looking at spring right now, next spring, I need to know this is what I have on the schedule. And then we also work closely with academic advising under, uh, Dr. Omen's leadership. Because they're the ones on the front lines with the students and listening to what those needs are. So if they say, hey, we have students coming in, they need this class at this time, we can very quickly pivot and add a class. Or if classes are filling up, we can add another section if needed to help, uh, with that enrollment.
Yes, thank you.
Just real quickly, is AdAstra the old, uh, what I call the old Excel spreadsheet and spreading everything out and helping with scheduling and helping with.
It is way better than Excel.
Yeah, I know.
What it, what we've been using is Excel, running reports out of Argos, which is amazing. It serves its purpose. AdAstra is way smarter. Um, it puts things into dashboards and helps us look at the date, the information holistically. And I mean, even some of the information we provided at the last work session showed, here's the number of your students that are part-time and how long it's taking them to complete a degree. Um, you know, when we first adopted this tool and started working with the team at Astra, they, I mean, they very quickly could say, well, these are the recommendations of how many more sections you need to add of this class and how many of this class you should reduce based on now, that's like, it doesn't account for the nuances of applied learning classes that have two or three students that are combined, right? That they would say reduce that, we say those are all combined, so we would keep those. Same is true of a high school section where the enrollment, we can prorate the payment based on the number in the class, right? Those are all little nuances that we take into account and can adjust for, but it's doing a lot of the analysis for us, which is super helpful.
Cause I, for, we, you'd use that term and I've forgotten what exactly it was.
It all also projects where students will tend, what time of day and what day of the week they will tend to want to enroll. Um, I worked with building the courses for one department and, uh, we made decisions based on what projected, uh, enrollment would be in terms of time of day and day of the week. And, and we, um, project very conservatively. It, 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 it tells us, probably we need four sections. We will probably build three. So, you know, we're using that resource very conservatively.
I have a couple of other questions. I know we, they had talked about from whatever time period, it went from twenty mils to twelve. I don't know what that time period was. But I think the taxpayer doesn't sit there and count mils. I think it's more just taxes. Do we know what the county valuation has done in that same period of time?
Yeah, Kent can, Kent can.
But he's down here, so.
Seven hundred million to a billion.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got a table that shows.
Yeah.
It has, it's seven hundred million to well over a billion in four years.
Yeah, which is.
I just argued with them both.
Yeah.
Weeks ago. It went really well. They're very nice. You should always protest your taxes. They're super nice. Taking pictures of everything that's not good with your property.
Someone in the appraisers office is hating you right now. You should always protest your taxes.
You do, every time.
I, I, you have another question?
Yeah, I did, but I will, I will.
Couple of people that need to join us by Zoom for exec session, so.
Yeah, and I would counter that, by the way. I have people call me and say, I need you to appraise my house. I say, well, would you sell it for what the county has it appraised at? Well, no. Okay, then no, you don't need to go argue your taxes. That's my point. Anyway, the other question was, and this, this is just me being ignorant. I have no idea. Okay, you guys were talking about the high school courses. I know we can't have another campus, you know, on, in Cedric County. But could we have, um, the high school programs like online with, uh, Ma- with Mays High School or any of those other Cedric County high schools? And have we thought about that?
Sure. So we have a, a pretty significant population of high school students that do take classes online. We cannot though, go into those schools the same way we do the Butler County high schools because it's not, we would have to get permission.
Right.
Um, with service area agreements and things like that. Uh, a lot of schools, um, and for good reason, they have within their districts partnerships with specific institutions. And so they won't allow their students to take classes. Some do, some don't. It's, it varies school to school. Um, but we absolutely, any student that comes to us and talks to us about opportunities, we're glad to, to help them get enrolled in those classes. So it's definitely something we're doing. We just can't do it to the extent that we do in Butler County.
Okay, right.
I was like raised there. Okay.
Wait, I'm, I'm, mine's, mine's a request for information down. Okay, so I was going to ask, like with Mary's talking, is it possible we could know the hourly versus salary versus administrative budget breakdown? So if we're thinking on something like that, we would know like a four percent raise for hourly would increase this much versus salary to admin.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Or whoever, yeah, if, if that's a possibility.
Yeah.
It's not too much work and I'm not trying to create.
We can.
I would like to know the breakdown, a percentage of hourly, number of people in the total budget. And then the rest of the salaried and the admin. So we'd have a breakdown if we wanted to. Get crazy. And then I said, uh, and the way this was presented, it might as well cake land, that we presented three ways on the budget. If we don't raise the taxes, we'll have a, a budget deficit of X, Y, Z. But the other way of looking at it is on OB one, option B in the, in the square. If we, if we don't raise taxes at all, we stay revenue neutral. It's zero dollars to anyone in the county. If we keep the mill levy the same, the taxes go up sevenish percent. That's a tax increase of roughly nine hundred thousand dollars of additional taxes paid. If we do a one mil increase, it's an additional one point nine million dollars to the citizens of the county. That's, that's the other. My way of looking at it is a tax baiter versus the deficit way. Just, I just wanted to clarify that in case I might watch it. And I did have one thing, if Dr. Muhammad or somebody explained to me, we've been getting the budget up, uh, updates, and this is from twenty-one, twenty-two, three, twenty-four. And in twenty-two, it's got us at one thirty-six, one thirty-four, which is the same. Then twenty twenty-three, this original one I have is one thirty-nine oh four, and then here it's one thirty-two, seven, one, six, and then it drops us in twenty twenty-four to one twenty-six, five, forty-nine. And this one bumping up to one twenty-eight, three, seventy-four. So I'm wondering why, you know, the last couple of years of those. I don't think it's been last, probably the last couple of meetings, these numbers have changed.
It's probably the point in time for when these numbers are being collected.
But this is the year afterwards and.
That would be a question for Kent because he's the one who put this together.
Right.
Um, so.
Last year's budget, we did, we did the one twenty-six and we were going to keep it the same and Kim commented like, why are we keeping it the same? And then now it's a one twenty-eight.
I, I think that one, I, I can answer the last, last two years. What we do, uh, for twenty twenty-five. This early in the, the year hasn't even ended, so the estimates we have are still kind of mushy. So at this time, when we look at it, there is a range we look at, the pessimistic one all the way to optimistic. The optimistic one right now, and it'll change as we go forward, uh, is about hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which is kind of the same that we are going to end with twenty-four bit. The pessimistic one is close to hundred and twenty-five. So what Kent put it, put in here was the very optimistic estimate, which has been our practice that when we start out with, we try to put the most optimistic early enough. And then as things go and we see how num- how people are coming in who is signing up for classes and whatnot, we adjust it. So I fully expect that by next time we come to you with the F, FY twenty-five numbers, that one twenty-eight, three, three, seventy-four would, would be less.
Could you?
Think.
Could you confirm these to me? Cause it makes me weird, like something got thrown down the memory hole and I've got a paper copy, you know what I mean?
True.
We'll confirm them to everybody.
We'll, we'll.
Once, we need to check with Kent.
Like in twenty twenty-three, the final numbers were one thirty-nine oh four and then here I've got a one thirty-two, one seventy-six all of a sudden.
And that is the correct number. What you have, one thirty-two is the correct number. That one I'll need to check with Kent. Why?
Yeah, but if we have a decrease of two or three percent, two or three percent, and two or three percent, now the numbers are higher than they were before.
That's right.
That doesn't add up either.
And what you have in OB three on, uh, on the document presented today, that, those are accurate numbers all the way to FY twenty-four.
Those are the final.
And twenty-five is still a project.
This is the same page I got of the book a couple of years ago.
That, that's correct. Yeah.
It should be the same. If it was, I'm not, I don't have a conspiracy of any kind.
I'm not, I understand.
Wouldn't it be, I mean, those are estimates at the time, like Dr. Earl said, they're estimates at the time in which they're compiled and then as you look years on, that ends up being the final number. Wouldn't that be right, Kerry?
It's what's, it's what's, well, let's, let's look at it and figure it out and then we can get back to the trustees.
Twenty-two is the same, then the twenty-three, twenty-four change.
Let's, so what copy is that from Shelby? Let us go back and look. What book is that from?
I, I snuck something over the top of it, but it also does with enrollment tuition compensation history corrected February eighteen, twenty twenty-one. These numbers.
Well, we don't have that document, so we can't look at it and see.
I just have a pile of all these books.
Okay, well, you need to send that information to us if you can, and we'll go back and check and look and see and validate.
I'll be happy to do that with.
What, yeah, a lot of this stuff is going to be an estimate at certain point in time. Some of it is going to be a final number after we've done our final reporting to K Board. So I think that's important for you to know.
I've got one without the sticky note on it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So moving.
Can I ask one? I, I think it would be helpful at the next work session if we can get someone to talk to the board about the limitations imposed by the master agreement on staffing. Sorry, Shelley, I don't mean to add to your to-do list. There's all this talk, there's talk about we've got X percent of the budget in staffing. And I think there is a misperception that it's very easy to just cut heads and that will save. And master agreement, at least with respect to faculty, doesn't allow us to just cut heads.
Right.
And I think we need to better understand that to be able to make sense of the discussion about how you can cut that seventy percent. Cause I, I think what you'll find is, is you can only really cut that seventy percent out of folks that aren't covered by the master agreement. Which gets into a huge equity issue if that's where we want to go.
Okay, we'll put that on our list.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to call the, uh, special board meeting to order. And Mary, now it's time for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need to move straight into.
You got to approve the agenda first. Motion to approve the agenda.
That's right. So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Sorry, can't write that fast. Trusty Good.
Yes.
Trusty Brungart.
Yes.
Trusty Rhodes.
Yeah.
Trusty Jolly's absent. Trusty Hueslick.
Yes.
Trusty Shear.
Yes.
Trusty Smith.
Yes.
Now you can do the most.
Okay, now we need to.
Chairman, I move that the board recess into executive session for consultation with legal counsel pursuant to the open meetings exception for said matters. And that the board, President Kim Kroll, Shelley Stoltz, Alyssa Erlich, and Ray Cannell be present. Their meeting will resume in the Dankert trustee room board within sixty minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Trusty Good.
Yes.
Trusty Brungart.
Yes.
Trusty Rhodes.
Yes.
Trusty Jolly's absent. Trusty Hueslick.
Yes.
Trusty Shear.
Yes.
Trusty Smith.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, I'll note the time that we go into executive session, uh, for the sixty minutes and let's, as people are kind of leaving and, and getting kind of scurrying about, if you need to go to the restroom, go to the restroom real quick.
Yep, there are cookies in the.
And then we'll begin.
Scouring about.
Scouring about. Get a cookie.
Maybe didn't, I maybe didn't present that the right way. Scouring about.
Scouring is fine.
See you guys.
I don't know that we'll be in sixty minutes, but that's okay.
Hey, you have. Didn't mean to say it that way. Another.
We went into executive session at six oh two and we have returned at six forty two. We used less than our sixty minute time and there were no decisions made and so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the special meeting.
I'll second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.